Okay, take the call roll please.
Butler?
Here.
Jordan, here. Obrich, here. Smith, here. Thomas? Thrash?
Here.
Ben Sensen?
Here.
All members of the presidency.
Okay. We have the full council this evening. The mayor will not be here this evening. She's under the weather. First item on the agenda is the minutes from the July 5th meeting. Has anyone had not received their copy of the minutes? Does anyone have any question on this? Okay, at this time, no one has any questions. We will accept the motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting. So I'm going to... Wait here a second. Okay, we'll take a walk or vote please.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan? Yes. Obrich? Yes. Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Ben Sensen?
Yes.
All members of the presidency.
Okay, minutes approved, seven to zero. Okay, no citizens hearing, no correspondence that I'm aware of, so at this time...
Jim, I was asked to let people know something.
Pardon?
I was asked to let people know about something. The annual St. C alumni picnic for those who graduated from St. C is July 30th at the rec center. Doors open at 10:00. Distinguished Alumni Awards Program at 11:00, followed by lunch. Also, there is a new scholarship that is being established in memory of Mr. Emery Stewart. As you most know, he was a longtime French teacher at the school. And it will be awarded to a graduating senior from St. C. And for further info, you can call Pat Wallace, 740-391-3455.
Okay, thank you then.
Thank you, Jim. Sure.
Okay, again, as I said, the mayor was not here this evening. So we'll move right on to the service director's report. Mr. Rehman?
Good evening, council. Council items for this report, we've got the 20, 22, 31, the oil and gas lease. That's asking for emergency so that we can actually get that signed. 20, 22, 33, the five-year tax renewal. That's the second part that we talked about before. That also needs to be an emergency so that it can be sent to the... That has to go to the...
Board of Elections.
Board of Elections, thank you. And then we've also got the 20, 22, 34 appropriations. This is our second round of the ARPA money that came in. Need that to be emergency so we can get it appropriated and going through. Certain restrictions on that and what we can spend on like the first round. So we'll be working on that. We did find out, it looks like with the gas aggregation program, that we're probably going to need to have to do a request for qualifications for the four firms that are looking for, working with us on that. So we'll update that and go from there. Meetings, we had five different meetings over the last couple of weeks. Completed projects, we've been smoke testing. Ward 1, still working on that. The machine broke down. We fixed it once. It broke down again, and we bought a new one. So we're working on that and trying to catch up a little bit with that. Edinburgh was, the paving was completed on that street. It's as nice as can be. Hopefully, we don't ever have to deal with that problem ever again on that street. We had some catch basins that were broken out there. Those have been repaired. We're working on those. Upcoming projects, the I-70 construction project, as we noted, were delayed until October or November. Did find out that the contractor there is somewhat behind already. So it will probably be November before we get in anywhere. We were able to verify the existing casement pipe. It is a concrete pipe. It is approximately 42-inch outside diameter. So that's about a 36-inch interior diameter, which should work out well. So we're going to be able to order our pipes for the extensions and get that ready to go as soon as we're given authorization. The distribution system, we're talking about probably trying to bid that out the middle to end of August. Lead times for materials might actually start and hamper us from actually starting the project this year. Plan is going to be to bid it out, and then what we'll do is issue the contract, get the contractor moving, give them a lay-down yard, and then see where we are with what we're able to get material-wise. Some of the lead time items are, you know, 24 to 32 months, not weeks, months. So when you think about that, that's a two-year lead time for materials. It's kind of a problem. The new rigs for the West End package plant were installed. As I mentioned, we're still smoking the sanitary sewers. We've had several areas where it's going to be us fixing, but most of the majority of the problems have been residents. The main one is actually not downspouts and gutters. It's actually cleanouts for their sewer system. It looks like the tops of their cleanout plugs have been broken off either by lawnmowers or yard equipment, and they just need to be replaced, so. Talked to the contractor that did the paving for Edinburgh. Going to have them get us on the schedule for the South Marietta section. Going to revise it, include part of the north section there too, down to the alleyways. Waiting on a revised number with that. Was able to confirm with the contractor or the engineer for our distribution project. We are going to go across the street there at the alley at St. Patrick's, but down on the other street, we're going to be able to go in the sidewalk. So we're going to dig up part of the street, put a conduit in before so we won't have to bore it, and it'll save us some money. Property purchases, the one site that we toured, the seller backed out on that one. That's the O'Duff facility. They are no longer going to sell their property out there. Couple of the other ones, for the grant money, we're going after, the Clean Ohio funds. We have to have a support resolution from the township and the county. Letters were sent out to the township on that, and they'll be going out to the county commissioners this week. So hopefully, we can get some of that. It'll save some stuff, save some money on these. Still working on some of the standard details, inflow, infiltration control plan, administrative policies and procedures. Departments, electric department, working on pole replacements, service work, disconnects, streetlights, storm damage, and then we're doing vehicle service. Waste water and water, the I-70 project, we talked about fixing hydrants, curb boxes and valves. We actually had our 10th water line break, and before this meeting started, I was informed of our 11th. So we've had two today. Actually, that puts us 10, 11, 12. So we're at 12 for the year. One is in St. Patrick's Alley, and the other one's on Iona Drive. So we're going to see what we can do there. We're also working with at least three citizens that have broken service lines back behind the valve boxes. Mentioned this in the finance committee, our sludge truck is in for repairs. It's been in for a couple of weeks now. The mechanic doesn't really know what is wrong with the pump, so we're going to take it someplace else. But that's one of the things that we might want to start looking budget-wise to replace that truck. Smoke testing this week will probably be at the end of the week because of the rain we've been having. Street department, we're patching puddles, mowings, street sweeping, catch basin repairs. A little bit of everything in there. Rec Center, the new lights are installed in the rec. If you haven't been down there yet to see them, Eric says you need sunglasses when you go in now. So that'll be nice. We can actually, you know, start turning off rows of lights instead of having them on. And then last Friday was the application deadline for our program supervisor. We had five applicants, and we'll be starting interviews on that. Police. Matt tell you anything, anything to say?
No.
Nope, okay. No report for police. Good of the city. We've got one that's out with COVID right now, and one that's out after just recovering from COVID. So it's coming back. We're starting to disinfect everything and make sure and hold people out where we can and do what we got to do, so. And that's everything for today.
Anyone have any questions? Mark?
Jeremy, what's the particulars on the lease? What's the bonus upfront payment on the...
4,000 an acre and 18% of the amount.
Yes, 18%.
And then, did you see my message about the acreage?
That's a typo, yes. They forgot to put a decimal point in.
I mean, it'd be nice if we had that many acres, but we didn't.
Yeah, we don't have that many, yeah. So 68.435015.
4,000 and 8, okay.
Yeah.
And then the second, what was the final? I talked to Donnie quickly on Saturday, but what was the final call on what happened with the power on the east?
I haven't had a chance to talk to him about that yet. I'm sure it was probably something. We've had some trees, lines into, or branches in the lines. Back and forth, and yeah. So that could have been that, or it could have been AEP supplying us, because I know that that happened once before.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Beth, that's your next.
Jeremy, so we got a new tester for this vote?
We got a new machine.
New machine, and how much was that?
Couple of grand.
Like two grand, three grand?
Yeah, like almost two.
Okay. And is there any status report on the dog incident over at Pinecrest last year?
That I have not heard anything. I know the mayor deferred, I don't know.
Right, they were supposed to show up for mayor's court. This is my understanding. And the attorney that is representing the parties had been in the hospital. They were going to do it by video, but nobody appeared. And I'm not sure what the mayor's plan is to do next, so. I can't speak for her.
Yeah, I'm just gonna, in fairness, I'm going to ask every council member for a status report just to...
Right.
I mean, that's gone on for...
Yeah, there was, yeah, they got several continuances because of COVID, attorney's health.
On that, did I misunderstand that there was a warrant issue or a warrant on the...
I thought that's what the mayor said last.
She was going to do, yeah, she was going to put out a warrant for their non-appearance, because they noticed them, they were supposed to be there, and neither the parties nor the attorney appeared, is my understanding.
Did that happen?
Not yet.
Okay.
Okay, Donnie?
Yeah, question, Jeremy. I know one property owner for sure, and I heard of a couple more, maybe you would know, had their water line separate at the meter inside the house. Has there been a few issues, or just these two or three, just a freak accident?
Usually, if there's a break on the service line, more than likely what it is is where it actually enters into the house, because the house will settle or the ground will settle outside, and it creates a pinch point, and it'll shear it off, basically. So if that's what happened, we're not sure, but...
This was inside the house at the meter?
Yes. So I've never seen that before, but I'm surprised every day by something new that I have not seen in this job. So it's one of those back and forth things that, you know, that's usually what happens is because it's at the wall and that's coming through, excuse me, something settled, and it put pressure on it, and it just snaps it.
Okay, just curious, thank you.
And then who's responsible for that?
The resident is responsible for everything from the curb box into their house. And that's what I was saying, we have three service lines that are leaking now that we're working with residents to fix.
Any more on the South Park Court?
Still waiting on budget. Have you heard anything from the Corps? I have not heard a peep out of them.
Oh, no, after you said you met with him, I...
I met with him, but he said he was going to have people call, so I didn't... I haven't heard anything.
What do you mean, waiting on budget?
Well, one of the things that we're doing is, one of the projects we're holding off on is that one. So we've got the police locker room, the lobby, some of these other projects because of our fuel deficit projection and some of the other projects that are coming up and things.
Okay, because you had said that if we pass the budget, the money's in there for the South Park Court?
It is, right now, but some of these other things, we have to go. We can only spend so much money, what we have.
Refresh my memory, what's the Army Corps?
The Corps was going to do the dirt work for the new roadway coming in and relocate the court and all the things, just kind of like what they had done for the school with just moving dirt. So it was an easy way for them to do training, but we were paying for fuel, so it would have been a major savings in the project rather than hiring a contractor to come into it.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you, Jeremy.
Welcome.
Police chief's not here this evening, so the report on Matt, the finance director, an MFP report.
We did find out that we were getting some funds from the pharmaceutical settlement due to the opioid crisis. It was, came down from the federal government, and then it was distributed by the states individually. So from the Attorney General Dave Yost on behalf of, it's called the One Ohio Negotiating Committee, we're pleased to deliver to eligible local governments the first payment of funds from the One Ohio settlement with the opioid distributors. All eligible participating entities for the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding will receive direct payments to help abate the opioid epidemic. And payments will begin this week. So we're going to get our first payment, and I think the first payment will be $26,448. And then there's another payment listed for later as $37,783, which will be a total of $64,231. And then there's a list of things that eligible, like treatment plans, intervention, and crisis support, recovery support. I was going to actually work with Matt. He hasn't been here, he's on vacation, so I want to go over the time with him once we get the money and to decide what he would like to spend that on.
Okay, thank you, Nat. Anybody have any questions?
And Nat, I mean, I had asked for, during the first round of the ARPA money, but perhaps this time, we can, we as council can get a copy of what can be spent or what that money can be spent on?
On the American Rescue, excuse me?
Yes, can we get a list of what?
Infrastructure, sure.
Okay, thank you. Maybe nobody else wants it, but I would like that, please.
Is that different than what you were just talking about?
That's different. This is a new one. The opioids, mine is new.
Could I see a list, is it, you have an opinion?
Of what we can use it for?
I'm sorry?
Is that what you want, of what we can use it for?
Yeah, I'm curious to see.
Sure.
But I think it must, I guess, have to work with the police.
Yes.
You know, because I'm thinking it's going to have to be earmarked towards.
Yes.
It is.
Yeah.
I'll get your copy.
And then yours is, yours is different?
Yes, this is the ARPA funds. We had a round of it previously, and I had asked for a copy of what it could be used for, but I think that's, I'm hoping this time I'll get it.
Yeah, that's what's on the legislation for tonight, the second round of the American Rescue plan. That's the second payment. We received the last, the first payment last year.
When it came in last year is when we needed to do the temporary water line, so that's where it went right into infrastructure.
34 is that resolution?
Yes, and there's a little bit difference in the distribution from the revenue to the appropriations, but there was like 1,300 and some dollars that we didn't have appropriated. It was just sitting out there in the cash fund, so I wanted to make sure we spent it all. That's why there's a difference in the dollar amounts. But the first, the revenue is what we received this year. And then the appropriations is over a little bit from that dollar amount, but that was just some leftover cash from last year.
Any other questions for Nat? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Nat.
We have, Eric, I don't know if you want to share about your, Eric has applied for a couple of grants.
You can if you have the votes.
The first one was from the Ohio Parks Recreation and Recreation Association. Have you received that one, or you're just applying for both of them?
Both have just been applied for.
For $2,500, it's for permanent Bluetooth surround sound for the gym. And then the second one is for, from the Pirates Charities. It's $50,000 for drainage and new fence installed for the baseball field, right?
When should we hear?
Excuse me?
When should we hear?
He's just applying for this.
They were just applied for today.
Was there like a deadline?
No, they did not give a deadline. It's just a 60-day revolving, so within 60 days.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay, any other questions for Nat?
Which ball field would that be?
It's the bottom field when you're entering the complex.
Junior sports.
Junior sports. It's really bad. One would be tough.
Yeah, yeah, right, good. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Nat? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to planning and zoning administrator, Mr. Murphy.
Thanks, Jim. The Florida zoning appeals didn't meet on July 7th. Approved both variants requests that were before then. One was related to signage located at the first element of physical therapy. Second was to approve the location of a shed at 146 North Sugar Street relevant to assisting in the care of the property owner's son that has several cerebral palsy. Florida zoning appeals will begin on August 3rd, 2022 at 6:00 PM here in the municipal building. Everyone is invited to attend if you'd like to. Trinity will be present requesting variances related to their new site for a NAPA property. Their variances are related to the front step back for the proposed structure, the landscaping plan, replacement of garbage dumpster. Second item, Edward Burzinowski at 107 Forest Lawn Avenue will be present as well, requesting approval to have two parking spaces at Forest Lawn Avenue within the right-of-way. See, just to kind of give some good news, it's always good to hear that. Cedar One Realty, they had their grand opening last week. They're located at 160 East Main Street. They did a great job cleaning up and restoring the exterior of that structure. If you hadn't noticed, over the past few years, the previous owner kind of was letting it go, so they cleaned it up and restored it. We did receive an email, the city did, from Joe Lookinum. He's the owner of Cedar One Realty stating that the grand opening was a great success, and he loves how the building turned out. He ended that the city of St. Clairso has been awesome to work with, and he said thanks for everything, so. That's all I have for council. And any questions you have, feel free to ask.
Thank you, Phil.
When is that zoning meeting?
It's Wednesday, August 3rd, 6:00 PM here at the city building. And you could always call me ahead of time if you can attend that meeting if you want to.
Any other questions for Mr. Murphy? Okay, thank you, Tom. Move on to the council committees. Finance, Mr. Spitt.
Yeah, the finance committee met before this meeting. As far as revenue goes, year-to-date, we're halfway through the year. We're at 49.559%, which is almost dead-on for revenues year-to-date. Expenditures, we're only at 34%, which is, you might be wondering why, but it's probably because, and Jeremy can talk about it, a lot of projects are on hold for various reasons, which we also discussed. We discussed the, you know, the paving was finalized over the other neighborhood. We talked about the bike trail, the amphitheater, which we got a bid for that for $10,000. They're going to start that at some time.
They said they'll finish it before fall, which isn't a very good schedule, but...
Okay, so that'll spruce that up.
Yep.
I talked about the rec center bathrooms again, the South Park, just the various projects. That's probably why our expenditures are low year-to-date. Already mentioned was the two grants, and thank Eric for working on those. Good job. Talked about some of the property purchases, and we do have legislation to get that $270,000 in. Did we receive that yet, Nat, or, so we received it? Yeah, we got to pass legislation to officially receive it. That's 2022-34. And the opioid money was mentioned. And Jeremy also mentioned we should probably be looking for a new truck, such a truck in the future. And that's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Anybody have any questions for me? Okay, we'll move on to utilities. Here, do you have a report, Steve?
No report. Next meeting is August 1st. It's, well, we're going for 6:15. Do we want to go ahead and do a vote for that now?
Do we, do they need to vote on that, or...
You're saying? You got, your committee, you can go ahead and change your meeting, and council doesn't need to vote on it, it's a whole, to change committee meeting now.
Right, that's what you were saying, but for it to, for us to have it at 6:15 on August 1st, which is our next meeting, can we do that? Or do we have to wait and have the next meeting at 6:30 and then do 6:15 the next month? Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, but I think, but really, all we need to do is...
And advertise that you're changing it.
And advertise it plenty of times prior to the meeting.
And then we can follow through the vote.
And there has been public notice, I believe, already sent out, so.
Yes, but actually, the first public notice has already been sent out.
So you're good.
So it could just automatically go to 6:15 instead of 6:30.
Yeah, the other day about a vote, and I didn't know if it had to be done.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that we, that the public's got plenty of notice if they want to come, that extra 15 minutes sooner.
Okay, that's all.
Okay, Police Committee, Beth.
We have a Police Committee meeting after this meeting.
Okay. Any questions for Beth prior to the meeting?
And that lengthy report that I just gave, any questions?
Well done.
Thank you. Three finalists.
Okay, we'll move on to the Streets North Side.
No report.
Mr. Ben Sensen, no report. Streets South Side, Mr. Thresh.
No report.
Safety Committee, Mr. Thresh.
Meeting July 21st at 9:00 AM, next week.
Okay, Building and Grounds, Linda, do you have anything on Building and Grounds?
No report.
Planning Commission, Mr. Thomas.
No report.
Then the Fire District.
The next meeting is Tuesday, July 26th at 9:00 AM at the firehouse.
Any questions for Linda? Okay, Mr. Thomas, Recreation.
Okay, well, I hate to rain on the no-report parade here, but give me an hour. The next meeting of the Board was scheduled for this coming Thursday at 4:30. As of today, that has been moved one week to July 28th at 4:30. Reason being, we have the Summer Concert Series this coming Thursday night, 7:00 to 9:00. Ford and Jones at, of course, the park. So again, we'll meet in about 10 days and go from there. Eric, since you're here, I mean, a lot of the report has already been given. Do you want to talk about some of the fishing and the, and some of the stuff that's just been wrapped up? Since, as we'll give it since you're here.
Yeah, we just finished our summer basketball league, played 160 games in, you know, a 16-day period from the high school and the rec center. We have an all-night fishing tournament coming up.
Eric kept picking the mic for him to record it.
Ow. You want me, I have to do this?
Yes.
I don't have any notes.
I can do it, then, that's fine.
Go ahead, you're good. You're good.
Okay, thank, sorry to put you on the spot.
No, 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 you're fine.
But the cat, it's called the Catfish Bowl, and that's going to be August 12th, 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM, all-night fishing. Doesn't get any better. So we'll remind you again of this at the next meeting, but, Eric, the one thing I wanted to know about was more about the, how the concession thing went at the junior sports fields. The rec department took over the concession stands at the junior sports fields, and that just wrapped up. Just give a quick synopsis on that, if you don't mind.
We started, do I have to go to the microphone?
Yeah.
I do, okay.
Yeah, that's to be recorded, and if you're not there, they can't figure it out.
Okay. Okay, we started May 2nd was our first day. And this past Saturday was our last day doing it and it was, it went really well. The junior sports, they were very happy that we did it because they couldn't find people to do it, so they were very appreciative that we, that we took it over. Everything was fine all year except for the very last day, we ran out of everything. So we had to make a couple of extra trips on Saturday, but we didn't have any issues, any staffing issues. You know, everybody was pretty happy with, with how things went, a service to them and, you know, we didn't have any problems with it, I should say. So, you know, I didn't look at it so much from us making money, but more us helping a group of volunteers that do a lot of stuff up there. So I was, you know, very happy that we got involved with it. But, you know, hopefully they want us to come back on next year and do it after those discussions that I had with them. They seem like they, they want us to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last thing, there's a kids' fishing tournament on August 17th at the reservoir. That will be in the evening from six to eight-thirty. Again, I'll remind you at the next meeting, the first meet, meeting in August, all of this that we discussed, of course, is at the park, rec department's website and, and social media pages. So that's my report, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Anybody have any questions or anything on the rec center? Okay, move on to Park District. Linda?
The next meeting is Monday, July 25th, four-thirty at the park.
Any questions on the park? Okay, that ends the council committee reports. We'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. Law Director, Linda Flick.
Okay, we have three pieces of legislation up this evening. All are being requested to be passed on an emergency basis. The first one is ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash thirty-one. That's an ordinance accepting the bid for the oil and gas lease with assent resources Utica LLC and declaring an emergency. And as Councilman Thomas pointed out, there is a typo on the lease that we will have changed before the mayor signs it if you pass the legislation. The total acreage leased is sixty-eight point four-three-five-zero-one-five. A decimal point was not put in there, so. Sixty-eight point four-three-five-zero-one-five.
And just clarification, you said there's three pieces? I think I have four pieces of legislation down there.
I have resolution twenty-two, thirty-three and thirty-four.
And then I have a thirty-two?
That's an attachment to that. That's an attachment. That goes with the thirty-three. We have to attach that piece of legislation.
So when we go to the Board of Elections, so yeah. About that, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for that clarification. And this is the one where Mark had asked about four thousand acres?
Yes, the bonus is four thousand an acre. This is a non-service lease, so that's.
Do we get royalties from the last five years or?
Minimum, yeah, okay, that's what I thought.
Okay, we'll have the first reading on ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash thirty-one.
Ordinance number twenty-twenty-two thirty-one, an ordinance accepting the bid for the oil and gas lease with assent resources Utica LLC and declaring an emergency.
Okay, this has been requested as an emergency. Does anyone wish to take any further action?
I move that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings be suspended and declaring an emergency.
Do we have a second? Okay, we'll take a vote on whether or not to consider this emergency legislation.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Oakbridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Incentive?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Okay, this will be considered emergency legislation. Jacob, would you read it to the second time?
Ordinance number twenty-twenty-two thirty-one, an ordinance accepting the bid for the oil and gas lease with assent resources Utica LLC and declaring an emergency.
Does anyone wish to make a motion, J.C.? Okay, we'll all take a vote on passing legislation itself.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Oakbridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Incentive?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Okay, that piece of legislation has passed.
The next piece of legislation up is resolution number twenty-twenty-two dash thirty-three. This is a resolution declaring the necessity for the renewal levy with no increase and no decrease of a continuous tax in excess of the ten mil limitations for the purposes of current operating expenses of the City of St. Clairsville, Ohio for a period of five years. And this, this, once again, we've discussed with the previous, this is a renewal levy. This is already in existence. We just have to renew it every five years.
And this yields about how much money, winner?
How much was it? According to the county auditor, what, two-hundred-and-twenty thousand?
Is that a changeable?
Yeah.
Changeable.
Yeah, one-fifty-six seventy-four.
Per year?
Annually, yes.
And this, do you wanna work this thing or this?
Yes, it has to be reached the Board of Elections first week of August, so we wanna get, we wanna get it there before.
In case there's any.
Yeah, any change, yes.
Changes that they require for us.
Is this just the first read? I know we've talked about this.
Yes, this is a first read. The first one that we did, the twenty-twenty-two dash thirty-two, was to authorize the county auditor to certify the amount that would be raised by this levy. And now we do the second part. It's a two-part legislation.
This has to pass an emergency?
What, the twenty-two dash?
Thirty-two?
Yes, we're requesting.
I don't think there's emergency legislative language in it.
There is, should be at the.
It was, it's on?
Uh, it's section four, I guess. It wasn't put in the heading. We took it from what had been done previously, but if you go to section four, there isn't the emergency language there.
Basically, it can be on top.
Sometimes it has been, sometimes it hasn't, as long as it's in the body.
Okay, so we'll read this for the first reading.
Resolution number twenty-twenty-two thirty-three, a resolution declaring the necessity for the renewal levy with no increase and no decrease of a continuous tax in excess of ten mil limitation for the purpose of current operating expenses of the City of St. Clairsville, Ohio, a period of five years.
Okay, this is requested as emergency. Does anyone wish to take any further action?
I move that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings be suspended and declaring an emergency.
We have a second, Thomas. We'll now vote on considering this emergency legislation.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Oakbridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Incentive?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Okay, would you read it for the final reading, please?
Resolution number twenty-twenty-two thirty-three, resolution declaring the necessity for the renewal levy with no increase and no decrease of the continuous tax in excess of ten mil limitation for the purpose of current operating expenses of the City of St. Clairsville, Ohio for a period of five years.
If someone wished to make a motion, Mr. Thrash, the second, Mr. Thomas. We'll now take a vote on passing the legislation itself.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Oakbridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Incentive?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Twenty-twenty-two thirty-three has been passed as an emergency.
And the last piece of legislation up tonight is ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash thirty-four. This is for the American Rescue Plan Act Fund. It's an ordinance to make supplemental revenue and appropriations for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the City of St. Clairsville, State of Ohio for the period January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2022 and declaring an emergency.
The emergency, this needs an emergency too? But we already have it, this is just putting it right?
Right, she cannot do anything until.
I can't do legislation until the money, and the money just shows up in the bank.
And what do we do with this money?
It's gonna be for infrastructure, so a lot of it is probably gonna be the I-70 project for our permanent water line.
This is just getting it in our coffers.
That's, yeah, so now move it into.
We just need to be able to move it in.
You have a repeat?
Ordinance number twenty-twenty-two thirty-four, an ordinance to make supplemental revenue and appropriations for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the City of St. Clairsville, State of Ohio for the period January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2022 and declaring an emergency.
Okay, this is requested as emergency. Does anyone wish to take further?
I move that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings be suspended declaring an emergency.
We have a second.
Okay, Mr. Thrash?
Yeah, we'll now vote on considering the emergency.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Oakbridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Incentive?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
This will be considered emergency, would you agree to begin this?
Ordinance number twenty-twenty-two thirty-four, an ordinance to make supplemental revenue and appropriations for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the City of St. Clairsville, State of Ohio for the period January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2022 and declaring an emergency.
Do we need a motion, Mr. Thrash and Jordan? We'll now take a roll call vote on passing legislation itself.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Oakbridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Incentive?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Twenty-twenty-two thirty-four has been passed. Okay, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Does anybody have anything quickly they would like to bring up or question or mention? Okay, the next, next meeting will be on August 1st at seven PM here in the council chambers. And again, the utility meeting prior to that meeting has been moved from six-thirty to six-fifteen. So it will start at six-fifteen at, here in the council chambers.
Police Committee, it will be in that room over there. The Police Committee meeting that we're gonna have is gonna be over there.
Okay, Police Committee meeting will be in the small room if anybody wishes to attend that. I need a motion to adjourn. Second.